One company and that company doesn't make a drain cover for our pool. Yeah, so the I when I spoke to this gal, she said they're probably going to allow us to go with the two thousand and eight drain covers. They they have to be replaced. But in five years, we will need to have this the requirements from the two thousand seventeen requirements.
So we gotta find a company somewhere in the world making.
Danny said to me that in probably the next five years, that there will be more companies making drain covers for pools such as ours. So yeah.
I mean, I never thought about that.
Yeah, well, and I have a question. I know that the golf course owned the pool originally. Are they the ones who built the pool? Do we know that?
I don't know.
They probably did.
I think they did, from what I remember. Someone told me back a long time ago.
The inspector is looking for the architecture plans if we could get one. And I started laughing.
That that was probably done back when the golf course first opened, like nineteen eighty.
Okay, so we don't have them. Okay.
The golf course, the golf course isn't gonna have a darn thing on it.
I didn't think so.
It's changed ownership so many times. And that it may not have even been built by the golf course. It may have been built by the developer of this.
All right, well, we thought it was a long shot. I I told her I don't believe I can even find that. But just keep that in mind. So right now, we should be okay with the two thousand and eight requirements. Um, he's still waiting for the drain covers to come in, and time is ticking.
I I have a question.
Yes.
Can we back up to there's a lot of water under the pool?
Yeah, I wanted to address that.
Just let it go. Now, I asked about that. I said, is this compromising the pool itself, all this water? And and what he said is, the water's gotta go someplace. But what's a good thing is it's not compromising the pool where the pool structure is coming up. So.
Well, what if the water somehow goes away? Will it then collapse?
No, 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 we're we're fine. We're fine.
But if there's water under it and the water dissipates, there's no ground on it.
What you're what he's saying is, you know, there's a buildup of water. If there's too much buildup of water in like a cement pool, the pool bottom would be pushed up. Ours is okay.
I understand that. My question is, is what if the water is gone?
No, it's okay. It's it's still on. It's it's solid.
It shouldn't, okay, solid enough.
Yes, it's solid. It it passed that inspection.
So they did inspect it for that. Pardon? They did inspect it that the the pool is sound.
Yeah, we're not done with the inspection, though, by any stretch of the imagination.
They've looked at this already.
Yeah, yeah. So we're good, okay there. Um, so we will be meeting. Um, the USA Pool Management has the monitors hired, and I'll be meeting with them on Tuesday, going through a training period with them Tuesday afternoon.
Tuesday afternoon?
Yeah. So they'll be coming down.
Who's that?
They have eight monitors, I think.
Eight?
Yeah, so Lisa and I will be meeting with them.
In here?
No, we have to meet by the pool.
Okay.
And so also, two other things here, three other things. Um, since we're getting close to the date of Memorial, I would like to put together a calendar. Um, number one, all of the chairs and so on and so forth have to be washed. So can I get some volunteers from the council or volunteers from the community to pick a day where we can bring some scrub brushes and buckets and haul everything out? We want to examine every all the chairs, make sure they're in good condition, wash them up. Can I? Is a weekend probably a better day?
Probably.
I got a power washer.
Bring a power washer up.
Will that work on the chairs?
Sure. Yeah, I can clean my chairs.
Saturday morning.
A Saturday morning? Can we schedule it now?
Have Lisa post that on the website. If we pick a date and time for people who don't, they still come out.
Can we pick a date and time right now? So I'm looking, let's see, we have the thirteenth.
Thirteenth of May.
Well, we have either the sixth, thirteenth, or twentieth. I want this done before the pool opens.
I'm available all those days. Uh, not the twentieth, so the sixth and the thirteenth.
How about the thirteenth? The sooner the better.
Thirteenth?
Thirteenth, everybody okay?
May six, May thirteenth?
Yes.
May thirteenth.
Uh, nine or ten?
Nine o'clock.
Nine, okay. And I'll put it out. I mean, as many people as we can get up there. Shouldn't take too long.
No, especially we have a few hands that help us.
Right. And there aren't that many chairs and so on and so forth. Okay, so we're good there. Next, I need, and I'll put a calendar up for all of us that are going to sit here and take turns, since we're going to have season passes for people to come up to the village. And we're going to set some times. I'd like some times in the morning and some times in the afternoons. Uh, should I send you all a calendar and you can pick some times? Um, and so we're gonna do that to relieve the staff from having to do that. Okay. And again, I would like to start doing that, um, the week of May first, which is next week, isn't it?
Yep.
Yes, it is.
Okay, because people are already coming into the office asking about pool passes and so on and so, so forth.
I'm available all that week at the moment.
All right, so I'll put out a calendar, or if you can just put something in my mailbox when you guys are available. So I figure, what, two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon? I mean, I I'm okay. I can sit here at noon, too. I don't care. Um, all right, so we'll do that. And.
What's this for?
This is for when people come up to buy and purchase their pool passes. And the rates will be on the website. Okay?
Sounds good. So you'll send us out dates and times, and we'll just kind of fill in?
Well, just pick the whole month, you know, and just tell me what days and times up until the thirty first that you might be available. And if we have dupes, I'll just let you know somebody else is doing it. Okay? Okay, regarding the, I know this has come up, water aerobics. Anybody in the audience looking at water aerobics? How did I figure that? And they're all going, it's about time she got to it. So what we have to do, um, with the water aerobics is, uh, some of the people may not realize is, the village is no longer managing the pool. Okay, so everybody knows that, right?
Yeah, we've heard that.
We are working with a company called USA Pool Management. When we got the contract with USA Pool Management, they asked us how many hours a day the pool is open. Typically, and I'm taking off your Tuesdays and Thursdays, which was the adult swim, typically, it was six hours a day. So that's what our contract with Pool Management is, is for six hours a day.
Okay.
Anything over and above that six hours is an additional sixty dollars an hour.
Okay, well, can I speak to that?
Not yet.
Okay.
You can do that later.
Okay.
So what's going to happen is, we have decided that we, for the water aerobics, will open the pool an hour before we open the pool to the public. So here's an example. If we open the pool to the public at noon on Tuesday and Thursday, the water aerobics folks, and I don't know how many of their of them are you, uh, what's the number approximately?
Well, we have twenty-eight people that do it at one point or another. We we vary from nine to fifteen people a session.
Nine to fifteen? Okay. So the hour prior to our openings, and we can keep it at Tuesdays and Thursdays, which is what your normal days were, correct?
Correct.
We will open the pool for the water aerobics folks only. So it will not be open to the public. But the water aerobics folks will have to pay the sixty dollars for Tuesday and sixty dollars on Thursday. We are not gonna pass those costs onto the taxpayers.
Why?
Why?
Why? Yeah, why?
Why?
Wait, wait, let me explain something.
Let me explain.
Comment at the end of the.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry.
And the reason we did that is last, whenever we had water aerobics available, open swim, adult swim, it was always covered by the village. When we were in charge of the pool, we paid, the village paid for the employees to be at the pool. We cannot open that pool without pool monitors. We can't. They will not allow us for our permit to have that pool open without monitors. USA Pool Management will have monitors available. We don't pay those monitors. USA Pool Management pays those monitors. So that's no longer a control under the village. So there would be an additional charge outside of our contract with USA Pool Management. They will charge us the sixty dollars for Tuesday and the sixty dollars for Thursday. I don't expect the taxpayers to absorb that cost. I'm sorry.
We are the taxpayers.
Why can't you post it in the hour?
Please hold your comments. Please, hold your comments. Please. We'll have the opportunity for everybody to get in line and beat it up.
So that is going to be, if you want to have the water aerobics classes on Tuesdays and Thursdays for an hour strictly for your class, that will be what will need to be implemented.
We, yeah, we're we're we are setting up. We're trying to accommodate as many people as we can, particularly the folks that might work in the afternoon and get home and just can get over the pool for a little bit.
So we're going to fluctuate the hours this year. So starting in June, I think June, we're gonna, normally, we were open noon to five, or eleven to five. We can only have six hours every day. So the first month until probably the end of the month, we're gonna keep it open till five. Then as it starts getting lighter, we'll shift the time so that we have up to six o'clock. And then in August, and again, late July, in August, as it's lighter, we're gonna shift it to seven o'clock closing. So your times will also change as we shift our times for the public. We can only have the pool open six hours per our contract. Okay?
Anything else on the pool?
Public comments.
Okay, okay. Any comments for Janet?
I'm fine.
Okay. Uh, police and fire update.
Wait a minute. You want us to speak about the pool at the end of the entire session?
At the end of the meeting. We have a couple comments.
Okay. On the police department, uh, we had a couple concerns about our electronic speed control signs out in the village. Uh, some of them were not working properly because of lack of sunshine, et cetera. So they moved, uh, some of those around. And they also claimed the solar panel, cleaned off all the, uh, uh, pine pollen and so forth to clean up those signs. So they should be working good now. There was a couple of concerns on that. Uh, that's all the fire department, uh, or on the police department. Fire department, we cleaned the brush down on the road coming in all from Hoffman going down to the fire station. They cleaned a lot of brush up. It looks great. It's gotta be done every five years, and it's looks really real good. But so did a nice job. And that's all I have.
Any questions? All right, uh, review of twenty twenty-three budget.
Okay.
Rigged.
Well, before I do that, let me, um, talk about the budget amendment that, um, I believe we have to vote on.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. So we have been talking all along about moving four hundred thousands from our general fund into our street reserves.
Correct.
And a hundred thousand from our general fund into our employees' compensation. So this is what this budget amendment is. It's basically moving five hundred thousand dollars from our general fund and being reserved for streets and employee but employee comp. So, um, I guess I want to put that.
We have a motion to accept the budget amendment.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. We'll get it approved.
Okay. What I've been, Sharon and I have been working, there's still, I believe, one number left, which is workers' comp that has not come back yet. Um, actually, you know what? I think workers' comp did come back. That's why I had to cross off the number on my notes page, or I had to write over it. So I think we've got all of our numbers now. It increased by one thousand dollars. Um, so I, we have this sheet. It's a budget, budget review notes.
Everybody's got it.
Everybody got it?
Yeah.
Okay. So as you know, we've been going through the budget. We've been estimating our revenues, our state revenues. Um, we have our expenses allocated out. So our current budget right now, as far as revenue coming in, not including property taxes or motor vehicle taxes, we are estimating to receive in the village, um, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand and seven hundred dollars. Now, a big piece of that is sales tax income. And this year, we're we're allocating five hundred thousand dollars to that. We're on a pace right now to receive five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Um, it's estimated that there's going to be an increase for that next year to maybe five hundred and forty thousand. But again, that's, those numbers could go up, they could go down. So I just picked five hundred thousand, and that's more than we've ever really estimated, um, for our budget purposes. But I really do feel confident that we can stick with that. So, um, if that's the biggest unknown, um, at this point. So when we put all of our, um, expenses in, okay, to the spreadsheets, okay, we end up with a deficit of eight hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. That means that that's where our property taxes, that's how we back into our mill rate, okay? So, and the expenses that we have in here basically are, um, the typical expenses. There's nothing, the only extraordinary expense this year is that we've got is being funded through reserves, and that's the eighty-four thousand dollars for the playground equipment.
Correct.
And for the trail, um, the trail refurbishment. So, and that's coming from reserves. So it's really not a direct hit to, um, tax, tax dollars. Also, what's in there is two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the fire department, and that's an estimate that we are still negotiating. So, um, it is an increase from what we paid them last year, but it's still less than what they, um, yeah. So we're negotiating that. But I think we can settle very close to that, two hundred and fifteen thousand. So now we're looking at our mill rates. And if you look at this worksheet, the, based on the county revow, our first tax rate on this sheet of twenty-eight point seven four, that was our revenue neutral tax rate with a six percent increase in our budget over last year. Now, if we set our mill rate at twenty-eight seventy-four, it's going to net us this eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in taxes, okay? And that's based on receiving ninety-eight percent, which is what we always do. We calculate ninety-eight percent. Now, the one thing that that I caution everyone on is that there are people who are questioning their valuations, and valuations could go down. Now, probably not significantly, but if anything, this number could go down more likely than it could go up. So that's, at that tax rate, we would net eight hundred and sixty-four thousand. And considering that our deficit is eight hundred and forty-two thousand, that's, in my opinion, cutting it a little close. Um, tax rate set at twenty-nine cents gives us eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, five fifty-eight, which I feel more comfortable with that rate. But, and then any higher than that, you can see the numbers go up, you know, uh, twenty-nine eighty-five is two is eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, which I think is not necessary. And the thirty cents, and again, we just went through these numbers so people could see where we are. Um, and again, part of our budget is also reserving, as I noted here, reoccurring annual reserves that that we think should be reserved each year are outlined below. So that's twenty-five thousand into capital reserves, twenty into police vehicles, two hundred into streets, fifteen thousand into separation allowance. And now this twenty-five thousand for the employee compensation fund, that's this sheet, that's what we're budgeting this year, because we're basing on what we received in sales tax last year, or this, you know.
Project coming up.
Coming up. So, and that's the way we're gonna do that. We're gonna make sure that, and if the five percent is too much, well, we can always cut it back. But we figured at least it was a benchmark number. Um, and again, the one-time expense in our budget is this, um, eighty-four thousand dollars that we have scheduled for improvements. So that's the best way I can. Does anyone have questions for me on?
I looked, I looked at, uh.
Where we're doing.
I looked at what this did to my particular home. Just that I have a, you know, what's gonna impact me. And at twenty-nine cents, which is an eight cent, or an eight cent reduction, my tax bill to Foxfire will go up twelve dollars and thirty-four cents, which is basically a buck a month, uh, for this. Uh, and when I factor in the county tax and the advanced life support tax, uh, I actually wind up paying eighty-five dollars less than I did last year because the county has cut their taxes quite a bit. They went from thirty-eight to thirty-three and a half.
Did they firm that up, or was that, because the thing I read, it was proposed.
Yeah, I think that's.
Is that what they decided?
That's what they're saying. Yeah, so that's thirty-three and a half cents down from forty-eight.
Right.
And I think that's pretty drastic, but they're getting a lot of things in the county that we don't get. So they probably built in their fudge factor.
I'm sure their tax base has increased exponentially from their expenses when you look at all the building in Southern Pines and Pinehurst and all over.
Well, in the evaluation of my, on my home with the two-nine, and I actually saved a dollar, one dollar.
Yeah, and between the county and.
I'll probably save fifty bucks.
And the and Foxfire, I think I'm down, I'm, I'm paying Foxfire more than I did last year, but I paid the county less. So I end up maybe two hundred dollars less.
Everybody's gonna be a little bit different, but I think twenty-nine cents seems to be the sweet spot.
Yeah.
It's still a, that's a pretty good bite off of our normal thirty-eight cents. I mean, that's a pretty good.
Well, we can also, we can also cut it next year.
If we need to, yeah.
If we see that with the homes that may come online and maybe the vehicles that come in with those homes, I mean, if there's a big difference, or if sales tax explodes or whatever, um, I don't, I don't see taxes going up from here. I don't, I don't see that need, um.
And that's why I didn't want to cut too far, and then bam, we gotta turn around and try to raise the tax again. Nobody wants to raise taxes. And so we didn't want to go that far and cut too much out of that. And again, the new houses, you know, we've stopped getting any new house plans for the last six weeks.
They're coming, they're coming.
We got those twenty-four better get coming over there at Wendy Ridge. But remember, we don't get a dime off of those until they're sold. So that's not revenue until they're sold. So, uh, does everybody feel comfortable with twenty, recommending twenty-nine cents?
I recommend it, yes.
I do, too.
Okay, I think that's a good number.
I agree. I I think it's a good number.
Yeah, and we will have a, uh, the citizen participation meeting over the budget just prior to our next work session in in May, which is twenty, I'm looking at the calendar that, twenty-fifth, okay, you say so. That'll be ahead of our work session. And so we'll advertise that as being the citizen.
May twenty-fifth.
Just in case, sir.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll, I'll have Cher do the cap, do the revenue calculations of using twenty-nine cents. And then we'll, we'll basically have about thirty thousand dollars going into contingency, um, this year on our budget. So that's where we are.
Great.
Thanks, Janice.
That's all. That was a lot of work.
Well, everybody, everybody helped.
Any other question, anything else you want to cover?
Um, pretty sure that is everything unless somebody has a question for me.
We got, still raised up. Okay, um, next up, talk about, uh, the, give you an update on trying to work with the other neighboring municipalities to address the affordable housing issues before. I've contacted all of them and have received feedback. One, uh, doesn't look like it's much of a, an issue to them. But I am meeting with Whispering Pines Council, a couple of the councilmen and their town manager. Janice and I will meet with them next Tuesday to go over what we see as the problem and try to get their support and working with our state reps to, uh, address some of the drastic things in the House Bill four oh nine and Senate Bill, you know, three seventeen, as well as some of the other ones on, uh, that are creeping up all over the place. But the time for bills has stopped, so they can't add any more bills.
Well, that's good, because they were adding like.
One a day.
A lot more than that.
Don't you find it interesting that we don't see the same.
Interest level?
Interest level with other communities.
I was surprised by that.
What do you think that means?
I don't even know if they were aware of them. I'm not sure. Um, if they, if they weren't tied into the league, or if they just aren't tied into what's going on in the legislature, they may not.
So did they, did they act surprised?
Yes.
You guys told them about it?
Yeah.
So maybe they also are gonna do something hopefully, or have done something.
Yeah, I hope they've done some homework before Tuesday.
Yeah.
But they'll meet over here, and we're kind of leading the charge, I guess.
Well, McGinnis, he, uh, he's kind of wishy-washy, right? McGinnis, McGinnis.
He's in favor of him, actually.
He's one of the co-monitors for three seventeen.
Why would he do that?
Because he, he saw, I don't, I don't, I don't want to speak for Mr. McGinnis.
You know, it's, it's a politically charged program right now.
Yeah.
It really is. Affordable housing is an issue. And this is a hand-fisted attempt at the state level to try to fix this.
The thing is, is that the bill has no provisions in it to keep it affordable.
None.
It's just, it's just called affordable. So it's, that's all I'm gonna say about it.
There's nothing there to do that. Uh, it has a May fourth cut date. It has to go, has to pass the Senate before it can go to the House. So I'm watching that to see if we hear anything. Um, watching the, uh, the league is sending out river postings.
One thing I did notice is on that four oh nine, which is the, um, accessory dwellings, they did add language, I believe they added language to it, that stated that that bill does not override basically the watershed. If you go to, uh, one sixty D, I think it's, um, article nine, section two, or vice versa, one or the other, um, it, it does not over override, um, those stormwater drainage and all of that, as well as, um.
Septic.
No, it doesn't say anything about septic. It's stormwater control and it's, um, watershed rules.
Yeah, we have to, we'll have to watch. And if any of these bills pass, then we'll have to ask for a local bill for exemption because of the fact that we don't have public sewer systems and we're on a watershed. But to go in and ask for a carte blanche on that now wouldn't make any sense.
No.
So we gotta wait till the bill passes, and then we can ask for a special bill, a local bill. So we gotta wait till the bill passes, and then we can ask for a special bill, or a local bill. And both Senator McGinnis and Representative Jackson indicated they'd be willing to submit local bills. We didn't talk about the specifics of local bills, but they would submit a local bill.
And I do have to make a comment that Representative Jackson was extremely interested in our views. He did understand our concerns. He actually agrees with our concerns. And he was... It was encouraging that he agreed, and he understood that this is not necessarily the best thing for every community.
And he does not agree with the overreach at the state level down to the local level. So at least we have that going on.
Well, again, you know, I sure appreciate you guys going up there and doing that. That was, I think, really above and beyond, so thank you.
I think it'll make a difference.
It was... I hope so, and it was interesting. And actually, Raleigh, I haven't... I've not really spent much time in Raleigh. Not in that section of Raleigh, for sure. And it was very nice, actually.
Yeah, a lot of suits and ties while you're in and out of office, I'll tell you that.
A lot of lobbyists.
A lot of suits and ties. Well, we hope that the face-to-face visits help, so we'll find out. Okay, next thing on the agenda, just talking about slides for the retreat. If you haven't already seen these, these are the last slides for the last retreat. And kind of use those as a gauge for setting yours up. This is kind of what I did for mine. I just took the bullet points, if you wanted to take a look at that and pass it back down. Everybody see what I was putting on there? And I'm doing the slides for the long-range plan. So you guys talk to her about that halfway through year three on that.
Is this... Yeah, sorry, is this mine or...
No, this is mine. This is just an example.
Oh, because I had submitted that.
And you put that on yours, too?
I did, yes.
Yeah, put it on yours, too. So if there are others, anything that you want to put on there, put on your slide. And then you'll also have a departmental slide.
How many days is long this? How many days long is this?
Yes.
This is your topic for one day?
Those are things we're not gonna finish them all.
That covers me. That would cover me.
Don, what are you gonna have, Vegas?
That covers me.
We're gonna have it down in Southern Pines and Congress.
Cool, Vegas trip.
So, Don, so most of the stuff you have, the three of these are mine.
These are really ours. They're ours.
There's three of them that are mine, too.
Probably, but put down your list because what we'll do is we'll put up a little chart board, and we'll start moving across, say, okay, three people said this is important, four people said this is important. And then we can establish the list that we want to work with for the rest of the year.
That's good. Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. I really am.
It should be very interesting. Very interesting. If you have any questions on those, ask me. Last thing that I think I have, well, not quite.
Blood pressure.
Blood pressure. A representative from First Health has offered, as a part of a program that they get funded for, to put in a blood pressure machine in our lobby. So that anybody who feels they want to get their blood pressure checked will have it sitting there. There's no cost to us. We don't have to maintain it. We don't have to do anything. So it's a matter of whether we want to do that or not.
Well, the only thing I think of is, I know we're not supposed to maintain it, but what about keeping it clean? What about...
Well, we have a cleaning crew.
Yeah, but after each person uses it. Yeah, yeah, I don't know. I'm a little up in the air on that. I think it's... I'm just a little up in the air on it. Wouldn't be my first choice to put in the lobby.
It's a service we offer the residents. They choose to use it.
If they don't, they don't. I mean, if they were supplying wipes and things to clean it after each person, fine.
Fill this out here in the...
They're just setting a table and a chair out there. There are pictures if you want to look at that. And how they do, they just set a chair and a table with a machine on it, and they're taking blood pressure in the home.
Sorry, did they come to you, or did you go to them?
They came to us. They came to us. It's a program they're going to all the places, all those local municipalities.
You can clean this, no, you get that.
It's a service they're providing if we want to take them up on it.
So would they come here periodically and check on the supplies?
I would think they have to come in periodically, calibrate, make sure it's okay.
I'd like to learn more about it before I really make a decision.
We don't have to make a decision right now.
Okay. Yeah, if you could make a copy of this for us?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that. Okay, then the last thing I have is people may have noticed the new open signs on the store.
Oh, yeah.
He has been approached that they... By our regulations, those signs can't blink, flash, animate, but they can still be on. And he's been addressed about getting a permit since they are electronic signs, and he has been very positive in responding to that, so.
Good to hear. I heard they had new signs. I thought that... Somebody said, "It's really cool." I was thinking, well, they put a nice, cool-looking sign that says General Store, Foxfire Village. It's really pretty. And I saw they opened it.
You know what? As long as it stays like it is.
Yeah. And what we probably need to do is, Mary left just before I gave her something to do. We probably need to look at this ordinance because there's a lot of stuff in there.
Yes, there is. I brought up one time about the paving.
Yeah, there's some stuff that we probably need to rid, get rid of. It was written back, who knows when.
Oh, just... We just did it like a couple of years ago.
I don't think we changed anything on it.
Oh, yeah, we did. Oh, yeah. I mean, that was before like twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and there's a couple, I think, good points for us to look at that are very positive that need to be enforced.
Yep.
But I don't want to get into that with this video.
Yeah, exactly.
No, but I mean...
Exactly. But he is very positive about...
Like I said, it stays the way it is, and it's not... I don't think it's...
It's not my favorite sign in the world, but it's all right. Anybody else have anything else before we go to public comments? Okay, public comment, okay, public comment.
Okay, I'm going to say something about the pool.
There, identify yourself and your address.
Hi, my name is Kathy Stareka. I'm at forty-six Richmond Road in Foxfire Village. And I would like to ask you to continue to designate one hour Tuesday and Thursday for the adult swim. Not... I'm not asking for any additional hours to be added to the pool schedule. Only to use the first hour, the pool opens on Tuesdays and Thursdays for the adult swim, which would result in no additional cost to the village. I look back at some of these things. I actually kept these records for like ten years. Like in two thousand and ten, what they did, for instance, the pool's gonna be open from, say, eleven to five in the beginning. What they did is they, on Tuesday and Thursday, just opened the pool at twelve to five for the general public and let the aerobics go from eleven to twelve. And because we have such a large group, and this was without any advertising at all, strictly word and mouth, we had more people who would come in the water aerobics than a couple of mothers and babies. Because I have been participating in this for over fifteen years, and there's not that many other people that have come. But the thing is, you can't do it unless you have like a peaceful and quiet setting without children. And you are the village you will set. And we've always had a schedule that was up and down. You know, up from May, we would have this many weeks. In June, we would have this many weeks, and the times would change. People are used to that. So since you're the village and you can set the hours, you can easily say, okay, on Tuesday and Thursday, we're gonna be open in May from twelve to five instead of eleven to six, or whatever you want to do. And you'll still pay six, you know, you'll still have your six hours that you would be paying to your pool company. We're not asking for that because this has been part of this community for many, many years. I was doing it for fifteen years, but adult swim has been from the beginning when the pool was first made. So people are used to that, and they look forward to it. And this group has been together, and this amenity has been used by them for all these years, and they're taxpayers, too. And I think, you know, everybody always, you know, this is a golfing community, and there's not that many things for people who are not golfers. We used to have the garden club. We had the women's association. We had, you know, different things, and that's all gone by the wayside. I met so many newcomers last year in water aerobics. They signed up for it and came because it's a social thing. And now since the pandemic came, people don't have a chance to socialize, and it's kind of important for adults. So since if you did it that way, you would not have to pay any extra money because you hired the pool company. They didn't hire you. You have the right to designate. And why does the public have to come in? There's only two hours out of the entire pool schedule that we're asking for. You know, we're not asking for the world. So I mean, I think you could set that.
And I... Go ahead.
So you do it twice a week?
We do it twice a week for one hour. And we also have, sometimes we have people swimming laps. Mary, she used to come and swim laps, and...
Which was okay.
Which was okay.
So all you would be concerned about would be the public.
The general public, because...
But if somebody wants to come and swim laps, they don't want to participate in water aerobics. They just want to swim laps.
Right, and that's why we've...
So it's like an adult... It's like adult swim.
It's for adults.
But we can't...
And during the... I'm sorry. And during this past year, or the years that you've done it, and I... Because I was gonna ask you to do this question anyhow. You bring up a good point. At eleven o'clock in the morning, how many people, I'm sorry, you know, in twelve, how many even came in?
Yeah, very few people came.
We never had more than five people. We've never had more than five.
And last year, we were actually averaging about twelve.
During the week, it especially doesn't, you know, doesn't make sense. On a Tuesday or a Thursday.
Right, and so these people are joining the pool strictly to do this activity. They don't come on the weekend. They don't want to come when there's children and it's loud. They want to just come and exercise, and it's for their exercise, for their well-being. They really enjoy it, and a lot of people have been physically healthy. They've had knee surgeries. They have this. They'd be able to go and do it, and they really loved it, you know?
Right, yeah, that all makes sense. I said, I was just thinking about how many people, young people, kids, or wherever, are you going at eleven o'clock in the morning on a Tuesday?
But, okay, so my question is, you're saying if we keep the pool open from eleven to five, which is six, that's our hours, okay?
That's what you pay USA or...
That's what we pay them. So you're saying that you'd be in there at eleven o'clock, and you're expecting us to keep the rest of the... The rest of the public can come into the pool, but what's gonna happen, is that what you're saying?
No.
No.
That's what you're saying? You want us to...
No, it isn't.
I didn't understand this is adult swim.
This is adult swim. Adult swim has been with the pool since it did septic, which they said is nineteen sixty-eight or whatever.
And I... I'm sorry, not to interrupt, but I wanted to tell you that I think initially when I was thinking about the aerobics, I was thinking, I don't know, you know? But when you started talking about Mary, I was like, this is adult swim. I mean, this is not just water aerobics. This is adult swim.
Mister Chin.
Mister Chin.
I think it's really dark.
And with the population, okay, cool, okay, cool. So what you're asking, just to be clear, what you will be asking is the public gets to know that on Tuesday from eleven to twelve, it's adult swim.
Or whatever the...
Whatever, yeah, whatever.
This is nothing new. This has been for...
Okay.
The precedent has been set forever.
I think so, to me.
The only caveat to that, and I have no problem with that, to continue with the adult swim on Tuesdays and Thursdays. But I want to be assured by your group, because I've heard feedback from people, and this is one of my concerns, is that they wanted to swim laps, and they were told, "You're in our way."
No.
I'm just telling you what I've heard.
No.
Okay?
No one ever approached any of us.
We discussed that last year.
We made our way for them.
Okay, and now, wait, wait, wait. I'm just passing on what I heard. So if you can assure me that the people are still going to have their room to swim laps.
Absolutely.
Okay, and we can try the adult swim, eleven to twelve, or whatever our... Our first hour.
Our first hour on Tuesday and Thursday.
Okay, I have no problems with that.
Okay, I'm really glad that you have seen that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everybody okay with that?
I'm just gonna show you a picture of this beauty. He's on a random day.
Oh, we brought pictures.
Well, I said okay.
I just want to say something. Can you guys... Our noodles are getting a little beat up. Can you guys contribute some new noodles this year?
We contributed all of our noodles.
Oh, okay, well, okay. Can I ask you to contribute a couple more? Fair.
We don't give them to them because the children chew on them. They chew pieces out of them.
Yeah, I know. We're gonna keep them in the room, but...
We have somebody else who wants to speak now. Leslie, you had your hand up?
Yeah.
You're on.
Oh, we'll post the hours for the pool on the website.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Leslie Drusko, Seven Hillside Drive. First of all, I would like to thank council and commend you on a budget. I know firsthand how challenging it is to put budgets together, especially when you have a revaluation year, because that's not fun for anybody because there's a whole lot of question marks that come through with that. This one was especially challenging because of the size of... You know, if you look back on all the reval years before, they were about two percent, one and a half percent. So having said that, I would still like council to consider a couple of things because just because you decided on a rate tonight, it's not an official rate until your budget is passed.
Correct. That's why we said recommend it.
Right. So in looking over the budget and in looking at the increases, I would like to actually ask you to really think about maybe doing a thirty cent instead of twenty-nine. My rationale for that is, because the budget is... You never know what's gonna come up in terms of additional things. You always hope that your budget comes in higher than what you actually spend, but that's not always the case. And if you look at, let's just say, an average house here under the new revaluation, four-hundred thousand dollars. You're talking forty dollars a year. Forty dollars a year is a pretty minor amount considering that this village has always run as lean as they possibly can. There's no fluff. There's no fat. There's no fat in your budget because I know there's no fat. There hasn't been any fat. So I would truly like you to consider maybe approaching this. And then, next year, if things work out even better than what you projected and there is continued growth here in the village, it gives you some room that you might want to do another. Whereas you're not giving yourself a whole lot of room here. So that's a consideration that I'd like you. I also just have a question. You know, I'm the biggest fan in the world of reserves. But most of the reserves that the village has, and if you look at other municipalities, those are reserves that are, even though they're not necessarily called capital, they are capital in nature. They're capital in nature because when you have a pool reserve, it's not for your average, you know, need to paint this or do that. It's being reserved for a major like once in every ten years, once in every twenty years in that kind of event. Same thing with your street reserve because that's capital in nature because of the kind of expenditure. So I really question, I know you've already passed a budget amendment, but I really question setting aside, trying to put money aside for compensation into a reserve. I question that a lot because compensation should be a current year's operating expense. It should be something that strictly comes out of... Because it's an ongoing. It's an every year. You're gonna have compensation. It's... So it's not like a capital item, a repair, playground equipment, anything like that, which is more capital in nature that you want to be saving for. So I would like you to consider releasing the taxes or putting the tax increase at thirty cents. I don't think that is onerous at all for the residents of this village. Um, and I would like you to actually take a second look at this compensation reserve that you're putting aside.
Thank you.
Just to, can I, oh, can I, can I respond to that, or?
You don't need to.
You won't?
You don't need to.
But I just wanted to...
It's a decision for you guys, I'm just...
Yeah, it's, it's, we're looking at it very similar to the separation allowance, you know, where we're, we're setting the money aside for what we know are going to be expenses. And with salaries, we have extreme competition that we, we have challenges with when it comes to retaining employees and, and getting employees. And I think to put money aside out of our general fund to, you know, instead of direct, um, just direct, you know, if we've gotta give someone a buck, you know, payments to, for their job, you know?
Say, four months down the road, we may have to draw a lot of funds.
We might, and...
You never know.
Consider too, that your separation allowance, okay? The sep, for the reason why the separation allowance was actually started is because that is like a non-recurring expense. When that separation allowance kicks in, you're actually paying somebody not to work.
Right, right, right.
That's different than, so setting money aside for that, so that whatever council, whatever year that separation allowance happens, setting money aside for that does make sense, because then you're trying to look at a council and say, "Okay, we're not gonna saddle that council that year and going forward with 100% of the costs of paying that separation allowance, because you're really paying somebody not to work."
Correct.
So, I, that's all I have to say, I don't expect a response.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak?
Sorry, it's another pool thing. I'm Beth Vieira, 37 Woodland.
Beth, I'm sorry, Beth?
Beth Vieira.
Yeah, thank you.
V-I-E-I-R-A. I just, um, I'm here my third year now, and the pool is a really nice thing to have in this town. And I think it's an important thing. It's almost like if you build it, they will come. I find that, yes, I understand that you, now that you've hired this outside concern, that the price of coming to the pool will be more. But I find that the hours and the length that the pool is open will not serve our community, our growing community, that well. We're having so many more people, people with children, and now you're cutting the hours.
No, no.
You are, you are, I mean, even if you had an eight-hour day, an eight-hour day for the pool to be open, oh, it's, it's, you're having a variety of people. You're having u, us retired people, w, we like it, and, and the Adult Swim is a, a really nice thing. But now you're having other people with children, so you're not giving anybody, or you're not giving a lot of us the time span to come to the pool. I know that the pool is a very expensive thing. But I, I feel that even if we could open the pool until, now that you have an outside concern taking care of it, I mean, it's hot until October. I mean, to shut it, open it at, at Memorial Day and shut it at Labor Day, you know, we all look forward to it, and since we are paying more money for it per, per session, or per going to the pool, I, I, I just don't see why we can't lengthen.
It's pretty, purely a matter of money.
Purely money.
Well, I understand, but we are gonna pay more money to go to the pool.
Not necessarily.
At what point is it become too expensive for us to deal with? And that's, that's, that is an ongoing concern. Every year, and the council I've been on, eight years, and Leslie's been on for, was on forever, every year.
I mean, but if you have more people...
But it's a little different now, that we have so many new homes.
New homes, new people.
And so many more children. There's much more socialization going on in this community than there was. Nothing offered for women who don't golf.
Well, I'd be, uh, last year's cost was like $45,000 to keep the pool going. I mean, our revenue was $4,000.
I'm just asking that maybe something can be done, maybe open another two weeks on, onto the season. Something. It, it's just, a lot of us like going, and, and with the, the expanse of the town, you need a little more leeway.
Well, we were considering after next year's budget, that we can't do it now, we already got the employees in place.
And, and we're locked in for three years with the USA Pool Management.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ed Gato, in your, in your ETJ, 300 Pinecrest Port Road.
I'm sorry, what, what did you say your name was?
Ed Gato.
Oh, thank you.
Um, just a question about the zoning that's come up. I know there's a hearing now on the Niagara, sorry. Before we get there, I'll certainly attend, but I have no way to find out justification was changing.
Okay, let me, let me stop you right here for a second. Um, public comments right now are for what occurred today.
Okay.
At the meeting. If you wanna talk to us offline, why don't we do that? Not in this meeting, because that's not on the agenda.
Okay.
So, that, that would, rather than cut everybody's time for something that's not supposed to be done, we can do this after the meeting.
Perfect.
Okay?
Thank you.
Barbara.
Barbara Pulla, for Oxlil Circle. Um, you talked about a season pass.